All right, we'll begin. Thank you for joining the Pasco School Board's work study session this afternoon. We're going to discuss the superintendent's annual work plan. This presentation is recorded for broadcast on Charter Cable TV Channel 191 and also if you search Pasco Schools on YouTube. So we'll have Ms. Whitney start us off in leading this discussion.
So thank you for the opportunity to do this this spring. And what I wanted to do was just start off with the purpose and non-purpose for this particular discussion and then provide just an overview of some of what I call the foundational documents that we have as a district that we've developed together over the last year, year and a bit. So what I was hoping we could accomplish together tonight was to present the foundational documents that really have defined the work of the district and help to prioritize the efforts of the superintendent. And we have a number of those that some are new and some are existing that are currently under development. So we've talked a lot about our outrageous outcomes. Those are the five broad goals, 100% goals across a variety of content areas, reading, math, on track for graduation in ninth grade, graduating with a career plan, and then also the having 100% of our kids engage in extracurricular activities. These outrageous outcomes have been presented to the board in two so far, one in February 1 and March, board presentations. And I think the piece to highlight about the board presentations are these are developed in a very systematic way within the organization. So the goals were set in collaboration with the board and principals based on our strategic plan. Those goals then are they're used to identify or to focus and target the work of the district. And so the initiatives that you see that are part of the plan where we do status, these are all developed in coordination with our stakeholder groups as part of the strategic plan, in collaboration with principals, and in leadership council. So they're a district-wide focus. And when I prep for delivering a plan like this or a presentation like this to the board, I start at leadership council, then I take it to the principals, principals give feedback, and then I present it to the board. And now I've added on a layer where then I create a little short video where we also then highlight them in the 4-1-1 so that teachers are now and building staff are now aware. So it's a very systematic way that we go about developing and that I get feedback before I present them to the board and then on to teachers. The other piece I think to highlight about the outrageous outcomes, by the end of the school year, we'll have done all five. And then in June, the building principals will dig into this high-level data that's been identified and really get down into the granular data for principals they're interested in. What does this mean for my kids, my schools? And once we do that granular data analysis, we'll be able to target or get even more focused with our initiatives that we've planned. Many of our initiatives that I report to you are very broad. Well, based on that data analysis in June, we'll be able to hone our initiatives and get even more focused on those, and then we'll be able to do action planning in the summer for the fall. And then I'll be back in front of you starting in the fall with that data analysis and then I'll be able to target and narrow the initiatives for you. So that's kind of an overview of where we started with the outrageous outcomes and where you can hope or hope to see us go as an organization. The other places where kind of the work of the super-- this really talks about the work of the district. There's some other foundational documents that define the work of the superintendent. Part of that is in a job description. This is also under development. You have Amy and Steve who are part of a small breakout or a subcommittee that's been working on the new superintendent evaluation. So we're looking at bringing back probably in June a revised superintendent job description. This one's the currently adopted job description that's in our board policy. There's also-- so that obviously talks about, you know, what superintendents do, what are those specific duties that are assigned to superintendents. The other piece that is in policy is a checklist that is used to evaluate the performance of a superintendent. And you as a board gave me feedback in January using this checklist. We're also developing a new checklist to try to refresh the language so it aligns with the job description that we're working on, so it'll be reflected in the checklist. And those pieces will be brought back to you from the subcommittee probably in June. We also worked on a new piece to the evaluation. We did this together as a superintendent and the board is some annual goals, and we've identified three of those. So again, that's a place where the board gets to hear some of the core work of the superintendent. And then a piece that I have added to the organization over the last two years in the successor year and into this year is what is called an annual work plan. In my successor year, it was called a transition plan. This year, it was called an entry plan. Moving forward, it'll be called an annual work plan. Regardless of what you call it, it's a way that we make the work of the superintendent transparent to the public and to the board and to staff. So this document has been online all year and it's organized in phases. Phase one was what went on during the transition period. Phase two through four is what's been gone on or what has gone on over the course of the year. And then I update status periodically to let you know, okay, this is ongoing work, completed, initiated, et cetera. So all of that is again where we get really clear and focused and specific about the work of the organization and the work of the superintendent so that as a board and a superintendent, we're working collaboration as defined by your board governance model to make sure that the voice of the community and the values of our district are transparent in the work. So what tonight, what I had hoped we would be able to focus on is identifying three to five initiatives of focus for the superintendent's annual work plan for 1718. So basically, I'm developing this document for 17 and 18 and would like us to work as a collaborative unit to develop those things of focus. I think what I learned over my successor year and then this year is I have a tendency to over-focus and focus on a lot of initiatives. And that stretches-- it's an organization's like a rubber band, and you can stretch it only as far as it's willing to stretch. And I think we've stretched the organization in terms of new initiatives just about as far as we probably should. And now I think it's about narrowing the focus and getting really deep around some key initiatives. The other thing I think I did in this action plan is I reflected work that some of it was delegated out to other people. So I think this year, what I'd like to do is get really specific and focused so that I can and for the plan to outline specifically the work of the superintendent, not things I'm going to delegate out, but the pieces that as a superintendent, I'm going to be what I would call walking through the organization kind of from beginning to end in terms of So the non-purpose for tonight would be to redraft any of these documents that we currently have here. If we need to do that, we can certainly schedule time to do that. Some of them are in process. For example, the job description and the checklist, we're in process of updating those. The outrageous outcomes obviously are in process. Or the other piece that we're not going to take on tonight is engaging in any planning or details or the how of whatever we end up identifying as the three to five focuses. This really just for us is about identifying what are those big things as an organization would be the next kind of leverage points for me as a superintendent. So the headings that you see in blue are slightly different than the headings of the transition plan and the entry plan. These headings will actually be the new headings in the new job description and evaluation. They're categorically, they're the same. There's one on board governance. There's a piece around strategic or visionary visionary and strategic organizational leadership, collaborative culture, instructional leadership, and then management and operational leadership. So they're in essence very similar in theme, but the language is different and it's more specific than what we had before. So what's represented on the gray cards are suggestions or things that I am thinking about organizationally, but certainly, like I said, I want this to be a dialogue, but I have put some recommendations or some of my thoughts under each category. So I would share those with you and then we can just open it up for dialogue. President Lehrman, in whatever way that you feel is appropriate for the board. So under the governance team, and so you might be wondering, like, where did these things come from that she identified? Some of them are from things that I've heard from the board, either through my evaluation or through conversation or public discussion. Some of them are through organizational components that we've as cabinet level or district level administrators have talked about being the next layer of focus. Some of them are just places as a superintendent, I feel like, are the next leverage point that I'd like to get involved in. So under the governance team, certainly we'll continue the work of the board governance model, et cetera. One of the pieces that I would like to work on or I feel like is the next leverage point as a superintendent in terms of what I could bring to the governance team is around strengthening the depth of district staff's professional recommendations to the board based on thorough study and analysis. And I think you could see a little bit of evidence in that in the new board district policy study procedure that Sarah and I presented last or mostly Sarah presented, I introduced and Sarah presented at the last study session, is an example of what I'm talking about. And this was feedback that the board gave during, as part of my evaluation, is asking if we would focus on that next. So that's where that piece came from. Under visionary and strategic leadership, I alluded to it a little bit when I talked about the next steps for the outrageous outcomes. For me, it's about the action planning that's specific to the outrageous outcomes using the data analysis. Eventually, as a district, once we've gone through this cycle once, that responsibility will get delegated out to district staff. But I'll stay pretty heavily involved in that next year as it's our first year through looking at the current outrageous outcomes and the data and digging down into that and then doing some action planning. In terms of collaborative culture, one of the things that I've heard from a board, from the board through the evaluation process was really thinking about and focusing on communication strategies that are proactive, that address misconceptions that the community has, that district staff has, that building level staff has, so that those misconceptions are not lingering. There's a sense that sometimes there's information out there that we could be addressing and we probably need to do it in a more timely manner. So that'll be a focus for the collaborative culture pieces. At the same time, as I continue to do the things that I've started to do, like listening tours and the superintendent-student council and the like the weekly meetings with the unions, et cetera. So I'll keep doing all of those things and then add on top of that this focus for next year. A huge piece that I feel like as a district that we're ready to take on, we've, over the last two years, we've tackled core curriculum materials across our system. So now for me, it's about how do we ensure equity and access of program? And that's something as a board, I've heard you talk about over the last couple of years as a community members have talked to me about that. This is going to be a huge piece for us to take on, and I see you as a board working through Sarah's kind of that deep study process in terms of the board policies that apply to this. And so this will be a big system-wide initiative in looking at how do we ensure equity and access to programs, things like dual-language STEM initiatives? How do we identify those core STEM experiences that every kid's going to get? So for example, if growing salmon and getting the opportunity to go release those in the river is good for a fourth grader at Franklin, then is it good for all fourth graders? And so should every fourth grader be having that experience? So those will be some things that we need to start studying next year, and certainly our expert teachers and community members' voices will need to be heard in that. So this is going to be kind of a Herculean effort. One of the things I heard at the soup for the soup event on Friday was someone was really complimenting the last community builders meeting and feeling like that that structure was exactly the way that we and that we need to be studying issues as a community and asked if that structure could be applied to the concept of program equity and access. And I think that it was a genius suggestion, and my answer was yes, you know, yes, and we absolutely can take that on next year. And I think the timing is right in terms of equity and access of program. The last one that I have up there is around ensuring highly engaged, competent, committed professionals are in every position in the organization, which really talks about or you get to that through a really specific and intentional recruitment strategy, a high-quality selection process, a mentoring program, professional development and retention strategies, so that we're making sure out of the gates, we get the best of the best coming to our district. And then once we get them, we give them what they need to be even better than when they got here, and then we employ strategies to retain them over time so that when we hire you at 21, like when I entered the organization, that we keep you through retirement, which is absolutely my plan. So that is a passion of mine. The values-based hiring was something that Sarah allowed me to study and implement when I was in human resources, and I'd love the opportunity to work in coordination with Robin Haye and whoever the new deputy soup that will be in charge of human resources to take a look at how do we ensure that those strategies and those components are in place? Because, you know, it's about the instructional delivery, access of program, and then those highly competent professionals in every position in the organization. So that's an overview of my thinking at this point. And again, I'll turn it back to President Lehrman for a dialogue. And I'll probably just record ideas and pin them up there like I normally do, and we can kind of narrow them down from there. And if there's questions, I'll answer them.
I'll take recommendations from the board on how we run this also. But what I was thinking to start is we could just go left to right and kind of brainstorm if anybody has any ideas or additional details that they'd like to add to an idea that already exists up there. And then when we're all done, we can look at it. And if anybody has any ideas that don't necessarily get binned under one of these, we can put it off on the side as well. Or if it comes up during discussion, Ms. Whitney can put that on a parking lot for us, and we'll figure out how to bin it and if it's one of the priorities also. So let's start with the governance team, which says, "Establish and promote highly effective district governance by creating a cohesive superintendent-board governance team focused on student achievement." As Ms. Whitney mentioned, we've been doing a lot of that lately. And we're, I think we've talked as a board that we're hoping now that the outrageous outcomes have been defined, that a lot of that work starts to get delegated. But I'll leave it up to the rest of the board. We'll have a discussion here if there's anything else you guys want to add or additional details on what Ms. Whitney's written up there to this governance team section.
You can read that from here.
Can I ask a question about the whole general thing before we go into the governance team? Are you, you know, I know we're doing your plan, and before you have kind of laid out what you want to do based on what we are doing, and this gives the board more input on focusing on the areas where, where in your strategic plan, are you prepared for us to have? Is five focuses too much? Or do you want us to narrow down only three of these? Do you want us to have one in each thing or two in each thing? Or are you really trying to keep it to one in each thing or one in three things? I just want to know where you're coming from with this.
So I provided one in each. It doesn't necessarily have to be one in each. I think what the question, so let's say you brainstorm a bunch of things under governance team. The question would be, are any or all of these more of the priority than the one I suggested? And we would choose one. And my idea would be I would start with that. And then like when we, maybe we have a retreat in January, if I've completed that one, then the next priority would.
Great.
Yeah.
Great. Or maybe even tweak them a little bit because some of them, because some of the things that I've thought of as this was going along oftentimes go along with one. Okay.
I don't know that I have strong feelings one way or the other, honestly, Amy. However, the work priority plays out is how the work priority plays out. I just would like us to think about how do we narrow the focus versus being, because again, you know, it's like you can only stretch people so far. And I think in the first year, when you're new, it's fun to try new things. If we keep doing that much new every year for the next five years, at some point, people are going to be like, okay, I gotta.
Well, absolutely, absolutely. And I agree 100%. So just want to clarify how we go about doing this.
Yep.
One thing we discussed at our agenda setting, and I sent it to a couple of you, was I found that flyer from, is it McPherson?
Mm-hmm.
I think, I believe I got it from WASTA, but it was kind of a trifold where this consulting company could come in and help districts actually go create what we're calling outrageous outcomes or student goals. We've already done all that, you know, a lot of that work. They come in and help you figure out what three to five initiatives might be. They do a lot of, they help a board create and figure out a lot of the initiatives that we've already done ourselves. And something that I'd asked Ms. Whitney to do, and Ms. Phillips was here at Agenda Settings too, was at least reach out to a company like that, not to go and create more goals in addition to what we've done or more procedures or more operational expectations, but to look at what we've done and figure out how to help us organize them, put them together, create more synergies between what we have and make it more, make our whole system more efficient. And that might go under there, not necessarily using a consulting firm, but continue to improve the efficiencies in the work we've done within the last year or two.
And I have reached out to them. I'll be sending them all the documents and then getting together with them to say, okay, what's the best next step? So I have reached out to them. I talked to them on Friday, and they're very willing to help.
Because this goes along with, you know, getting this more in-depth, I think you're alluding to this already, but I'd really like, because it talks, to me, it seems like it's talking about data, and I would really like something that has, that these, that these things that we're looking in deeply to have some very specific data goals as well as implementation goals and other things. So that would go right along with this, but I do want a little bit of a focus. I shouldn't even say focus. I want data in the picture as one of the things that, and data goals is important.
So there is, under the visionary and strategic organizational leadership, it says action planning specific to the outrageous outcomes using data analysis. Does that cover it or is there additional, additional note to add, Amy?
I think that those outrageous outcomes, having action plans is fantastic, but we've got to sell it to the principals and get the parent. So I don't know if we, once again, can add that into it because it kind of goes with it already. Action planning specific to outrageous outcomes using data analysis, which is great, and data goals, again, not just using data to analyze, but also setting some really valid data goals. But if we don't have buy-in, I've made a point of asking teachers if they've heard about outrageous outcomes, and most of them haven't at this point. We have to have buy-in from the teachers to get there. Otherwise, our outrageous outcomes are going to be not. So, you know, having a big poster in each school, whatever it takes, and then just, you know, it seems like from your conversations, the principals are already kind of getting on board with this and figuring out what they can do to get some of these key things to increase. But we've got to sell our teachers on it too. So I realize that's not your work directly, but anyway.
It's all my work, yeah, for sure.
Just a few general comments. I'd like, going back to kind of what your broad overview, I appreciated what you said, and I've heard this from other, from people throughout the district, that over the last couple of years, we often have new programs or exciting things, but we kind of implement it, and then we don't really kind of follow through and like become really good at that. Two things that just came to mind, and the PBIS would be an example. We've initiated this new behavior management, you know, so is that working? How is it working? Are we making progress with that? Another similar thing would be our STEM initiatives. You know, I was, even before I was on the board, I was participated in Franklin opening and tried to be really involved in that. And I'd love to see this kind of wrap back around, like you said, making sure we're, we have equity and fidelity and that we have some, you know, consistent program. Is it working? I'd love to see how the, those schools, Franklin and the other STEM elementary schools, like are, is it, what is the progress that we're making? Are their, is their performance good, bad, tame? Is it, you know, what are the good and bad of that? Those are just two examples that I thought of that kind of encapsulate that idea of, you know, we do these things, let's make sure that we've, that we, you know, come full circle and make sure that it's working how we hoped. Since on that first one that we're still on, not necessarily a new idea, but I just wanted to point out that I like how we've changed kind of some of our calendaring as far as our governments team, governance team and planning to have some of our retreats, like as study sessions a little bit earlier. I really appreciate that. It makes it easier for me. It's very hard to make additional meetings, so I'd like to keep that as part of that planning of the governance team. It kind of fits into that one. So I'd love it if we continue to do that over the next couple of years because I think that's efficient use of our time and very helpful.
So let's move on from governance team, move over to the right one, visionary and strategic organizational leadership. Increase organizational efficiency, innovation, and proactivity in alignment with a vision of high performance that is shared and supported by stakeholders. Does anybody have another initiative that they don't see us working on right now or something that we would like to add more details to in this, in this section?
So one that comes to mind, the proactivity, this is, has to kind of come from the district level, but I've heard some variation in how teachers feel about what they're able to do. You know, I've had some teachers mention they want to do creative things, and depending on the building they're in, that may be encouraged or discouraged. And so I'd like to see better consistency there. If a teacher has such and such idea, is that something that can be, that is consistent, that that's encouraged, not just from a district level, but throughout every school and every grade level and every teacher, that we really should be promoting and encouraging that creativity? And I think sometimes that may not happen due to variations on ideas of policy or, and so it's kind of the fidelity or consistency between schools. And so that we want that creativity, innovation, proactive efforts of every teacher and staff member, and I really think we need to enable and empower that more.
That becomes a little bit of a challenge because I know we've got some, I think music was an example that was brought up, that some schools are doing some things and others are not doing those things. And so there was some concern that we're not being consistent from school to school. So I don't know if there's a way to put, I don't know if policy is the right word, but some kind of structure around that so that people can be creative but not, but still remain consistent? And I don't know how we would identify something like that, but that might be worth doing that.
Are we talking about instructional leadership? Did we skip collaborative culture?
I was talking about this, the visionary and strategic organizational leadership, but it, from the district on down, just pointing out those principles that they're trying to implement as an organizational leadership, seeing those implemented as well throughout the schools.
Some of these, some of these headings are pretty nebulous.
Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, you're right, Ms. Phillips. I mean, it could fit into multiple things, multiple categories as far as encouraging that.
Yeah, I would, under instructional leadership, yeah, certainly put that in there. I think for me, instructional leadership is. for me, instructional leadership is primarily curriculum. Let's make sure we have good curriculum, that we're implementing it with fidelity.
And that, and that's, if we're going to instructional leadership, because I'm confused, because we're jumping around, but, but I agree 100% with Steve, ensuring quality in program access is, is really important, but I don't know if we should take that on before we make sure that teachers are trained and comfortable in a brand-new curriculum and have the support and the training they need to execute that. I also believe we, whatever we do has to be across the board. There are lots of classrooms out there that I've heard about and witnessed personally, that are already kind of getting away, and some that have gotten away and then gone back to the new curriculum, because it's a heavy load to put on a teacher, this, a brand-new curriculum. And, and yet, we have all these brand-new curriculums, elementaries, education teachers, some of them are going to have, I think, four or five new curriculums they have to implement in two years. It's huge. I just feel like that is the looming problem in instructional leadership right now, and that's what I hear from a lot of teachers as well. And anyway, that, that it's, it's almost too much, they don't know how to use it, there's problems with this, there's problems with that. Getting a support system around our teachers and helping them, you know, and, and I agree with, with Erin, there has to be a level of creativity, but we also can't say, you know, go back and do, what are those New York, Engage New York, you know, some of the teachers that were just, you know, that's what they were teaching their kids with, were these, were these worksheets off, and, and then we don't have any, any level of congruency in our curriculum. And, and one way to ensure that teachers are teaching is to have across the board assess, you know, I can't think of the word right now, but assessment.
Common assessments.
Curriculum guide.
Yeah, and, and not like the end-of-year assessments that take forever, but like, okay, I, anyway, there's lots of schools that are like, okay, on Friday or on Thursday, these assessments go out throughout the direct, direct district, their page, or two pages of math, same grades, same, same assessments. Kids that have special ed might have something a little bit different, but you're getting an idea of what the kids are doing across the district for each unit of study, and then make sure they get the study units in.
So a lot of what you're describing has been called out specifically in the outrageous outcomes under those initiatives.
Uh-huh.
So when you think about, that will be work that goes on next year, while at the same time, we're studying what the teachers and community want in terms of equity and program access. So next year would be a study year, so we have stakeholder and community and teacher voice with implementation the following year.
So we wouldn't be implementing that. Okay, I still.
I mean, if you're looking at, for example, if the community's voice was, we want to expand the dual-language program, we couldn't, there would be absolutely no way to do that, start, like if, even if we made that decision today, to do that with any kind of integrity for August. But what we can do is be very intentional and strategic about studying our board policies and engaging stakeholders next year around that huge concept of equity and program access, and plan an implementation for the following year.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which is great. I still think, I, I would love to see more dual-language. I would love to see STEM across the district. I'd love to see all of these things. But I, I still think that, that it might be most important, and anyway, for, to make sure that curriculum is implemented with fidelity and consistency, and that our teachers are getting the, the training and support that they need. So that's where I'd go with instructional leadership.
But all of this is not just, just the, the, her responsibility that needs to be under her, you know, it, it.
I know.
Yeah, you know, it has to.
Oh, I know, and I, I'm just afraid we give that to somebody and, and it's, it gets done, it's, it's huge. It just, it needs to be a priority, and that's, anyway.
Just brainstorming.
Yeah, I know.
Miss Lincoln.
I know, we're brainstorming, but you know, this is her work plan, it's not her job to, it's, you know, this is what needs to be done by her other.
I'll just say right now, since you brought up dual-language, I would love to see us expand that, and think that, I would love if that was one of the five initiatives that we look into that. I've already been talking to a lot of people about that. When I went to the BI, the PAC conference, that was called PC, I asked a number of the people about that. So I think there's a interest and need for that, that's something we do well, that we should expand. We need an Eastside School with that program, and we just have, I'd love to see us have a model where we plan on like adding a program every year or every other year, as we plan out our, our future. So I would love that to be one of the big initiatives. At the STEM, I'd like to see more data first, Ms. Phillips brought up the STEM. I, I don't want to necessarily see us open up more, convert more schools to that until we actually receive some data as far as like how it's going, what's going well, what's not going well.
On the STEM, I, I am curious to know, are they really different? Are we trying to implement some measure of STEM in every school? And, and it's interesting that we have, that our new schools are STEM schools, we call them STEM schools. I would expect the education in those schools might be a little bit different than the others, but, but hopefully they're all learning the same thing. And, and it was done, those schools were opened at, at a time when STEM was a big, big deal. But I'm not sure we're going to go change the name of all of our schools to STEM schools. Those are now named STEM schools, so they're probably going to stay that way. But I would, I would like to think that our program is consistent across all of our schools, or that we truly do, if we are going to have a STEM education, that we open that up to everybody in the district and allow them the same opportunity to get into that school, even that those who live in that area have. So, anyway, I, I would really like to know what the, if there is a huge difference between those, but that's not high on my priority list.
We've heard that comment, question from, from multiple people, so I think we should, we'll work together and try and get that on as either a study session, or maybe onto the agenda, not, not in the next month or two, but we'll look out and determine when, when it makes sense to put it on there.
Well, and I think this conversation really kind of reinforces my recommendation to do a, a very in-depth study of ensuring equity and program access. You know, what, what do all of those mean, and engaging the right stakeholders and having those conversations. So, you know, this is one of those situations where we talk about kind of being proactive and in-depth with our studying, and I think this is a real opportunity for us to do that, around STEM, around dual-language, around whatever the other ideas are out there, to make sure that we have all of the right information from all of the right people, so that we can be thoughtful.
And make sure that we're disaggregating it correctly.
Yeah.
Because some of these STEM schools are in, you know, less poverty areas that typically score higher, so we need to make sure that we're comparing those scores, not against district averages, but against similar schools that aren't STEM. That's critical. It's pretty easy to look up Delta and any other high school in, in, because I've done that, and Delta's scores are dramatically better than any of the other high schools. And you could say that those kids, just by their applying, are more interested in that kind of an education. And, and so there, you do have that, but, but needless to say, I, I believe they score about 20 points on average higher. I don't know with the new smarter balance, but that's what they used to score under the old testing system. So, in, across the board, about 20 points in mathematics and, and English language arts against other high schools over Pasco. It's not as much.
Don't grade me on my spelling, I think I might have.
So, anyway, that's, I looked at like, data like two years ago, so I could read.
Do you want me to read?
That's what sticks in my head.
So people have been saying a lot of things, I'm going to add these cards up there. I put implementation of curriculum materials and assessments with fidelity, professional development to support teachers in high-quality instruction, and then just a card that says fidelity and consistency, and I'll put it up under instructional leadership.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Phillips. Those are the types of numbers I'd like to see. I've had people ask me about that with Franklin, like, because you can, it's hard to show, like you said, because you kind of, some of these select out, like Delta may be just selecting out a group, so you kind of have to look at what was, what was their performance before that and after that. So we can look at Franklin, we can look at McGee, we can kind of try to get the same or a similar cohort of people, but it's a little tricky because we have opt-ins, so it's selected out, people that are involved and that are really interested in that. So it's a little, but I, I agree, I really want to see some data around that. And, and kind of like the Community Builders Group, where there's kind of feedback from parents, teachers, staff, principals, like, how is this going, students even? Like, like what was your experience like this compared to when you were at McGee or my, or whatever other school? And is the experience different? Is it valuable? What is, what is good and bad that we should be doing in other schools?
Well, I do know that for, for the Pasco students that go to Delta are not all the top students. They weren't, you know, there were a lot of students that were struggling in middle school that went to Delta.
Yeah, so just to be clear.
Yeah.
That students, any student can opt into Delta, and it's a lottery. So now, what you're also saying, what you're saying is, you know, to select to fill out the application, but a lottery implies that you're interested in that, and so that can impact.
Interested in education. There's a lot of students in our schools that just go, because that's what you do. Wouldn't take the initiative. So I think, I'm not sure where this fits up there.
I'm ready.
The bond. I, I, I think that has got to be a priority, and we've got, we won't get into planning, but, but I think somehow we have got to, that has got to be a focus.
I'm running out of color.
And what, with that beander?
I think it's.
Collaborative community?
Management and operational leadership. I mean, buildings, facilities, that's where it should fit, but these titles are a little nebulous.
I think you and I helped make some of these titles.
I know. And, and I think some of it was pulled in from WASDA's.
It was. We, we feel like we took what WASDA had and tried to simplify a little bit, and it's still probably not ideal.
Yeah.
So many things fit different areas, right?
Yes.
Right. But I think the, the key over there is operations, and buildings are part of the operations.
Stick your hand in the tax.
And part of the work also would go under the collaborative culture, where it says, solution-focused communications and authentic engagement, and just spreading the message of why we need, whatever it is we decide that we do need. And I know we're working on that right now with the Community Builders Group, but it'll take, it'll take focus by Ms. Whitney, for sure.
Yeah, I think it, it has to be intentional. I, I don't think this is something that people are just going to recognize. We, we have been crowded for so long that it's just become a way of life.
Yes.
It's not urgent that we fix it, it's just what we do. And, and some, we've got to change that. I was talking at church on Sunday, I'd ask a girl how she's doing, ask her what school she's in. She made the comment that, she's at McLaughlin, she's a seventh grader at McLaughlin. She says, "I'm in a portable, and I've been in a portable every year except for first grade," I think it was. It's just, it's just life for her, and probably for a lot of our students. So, anyway, it was interesting.
What, what, what was your answer for that last one? Because I really liked it when we started out. I don't remember what you put down.
The, I'm sorry?
For the last, for that, what did you have for that leadership?
The priority that I want to focus on is ensuring that there's a high-quality, engaged, committed professional in every position in the organization. So recruitment, retention, selection, mentoring, et cetera.
Right, right, right.
The values.
Because I think the recruitment and retention is.
Huge.
Huge.
I agree.
That's a, a huge, huge thing, because when you, when you get someone here, and, you know, the first year in getting them, you know, trained, or whatever, however you want to commit it, or whatever, it means it's, it's a huge expense and a commitment from the district, and, and you want to keep them. So I, you know, I think that's, that should be a number-one priority.
Yeah, I agree, absolutely. I think that should be one of the three to five as well. That's an area that, you know, encompasses so much with the bargaining this year, competitive salary benefits, recruitment, recruiting the right people, buy-in to the district vision, professional development. It really encompasses a lot of things. I think one area that we've talked about in the past that I'd like to see more, maybe we've changed this a little bit, but it just came up the other day. I was talking to someone from another district that's working, works part-time with a partner teacher, and, and she works, you know, Monday, Tuesday, and every other Wednesday, and, and that works because she has a young child at home. And I, I think there was some resistance to that type of a schedule for our part-time excellent teachers that maybe want to be mom or do, you know, and it's, that's usually what it is. It's a, you know, a teacher has a child, they want to be there, and so they don't want to work full-time. I really think that's an area that we need to expand and provide more flexibility, because we have so many great teachers that are in that situation, that we don't want to lose them. But if we are insisting in like a half a day every day throughout the week, or, that's not going to work for them, you know. If they're going to come to work every day, they want to come the whole day. But at this, you know, two and a half days a week, that works really well for a lot of people in that situation, of which we have many.
That's tough, because a lot of times those teachers split between the sciences and maths and English language arts. And so then you have two and a half days of instruction of, you know, of science, and, and so it does, does make it hard. My, I have a child that's in a split class like that, and it's, I think it's fantastic. You have two teachers that take their favorite subjects and teach them, and I feel like it's beneficial to the child.
I think it tends to work more in the younger grades, it's easier, because it's kind of, you know, then they just all, they both do each, or they can divide it up, but I can definitely see it being more of a challenge in the older grades. But the younger grades, it's, it's very flexible, and kids get used to that schedule. It helps us retain great teachers that would leave otherwise if we weren't flexible with that.
So I think, I agree. I mean, this is one of the, I mean, there's three areas, I think, that are key in my mind. It's those who work in this building, the, the top administrative staff have to be top-notch people. The principals at every building has to be top-notch people.
Exceptional, yes.
And the teachers need to be exceptional. And whatever we need to do to, to make sure we have the right people in the right positions, then I, I think that needs to be a priority for us. I think like Dr. Richardson's talking about, and, and this, again, not, not to start a new program, and maybe this isn't the time, but I think we do need to get creative about what we're going to do to retain teachers, to bring them in and, and make them effective. I know in my work, you know, this is, this is the challenge, I think, in teaching. We can take a 40-year teacher, and we take a, a brand-new teacher, and we put them in the same, they both teach a class. And I don't know how we take, if, if we can get a mentor program, and we probably have one, that, you know, how effective it is, I, I don't know, maybe it's great. But something like that, that we can bring these people along and make them more effective, because certainly there's a difference between a 40-year teacher and a, and a brand-new teacher, more effective. So anything we can do to, to.
Retain.
Retain, but strengthen our new teachers and, and, you know, being flexible. Flexible schedules is a challenge, because then you get into bargaining and benefits, and how do you, how do you make that fair and equitable? That's a challenge, I get it. But something that certainly long-term we need to look at.
Because there's a passion in the beginning, you know, they have that.
That's another challenge, too, yeah, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good partnership for both, right? You have a new teacher that's excited, brings new ideas, and that kind of comes into what I was saying earlier with the creativity, the proactivity. You, we have these new teachers that are just super excited, and if they're not allowed some flexibility to implement some of these great ideas that they've picked up, or, then that gets discouraging real quick, and they either go out of teaching altogether, or we, we lose them. And so providing that mentor, I, I love that idea of having an experienced teacher with, paired with every new teacher, and they can benefit each other. And we, I think we need to provide the consistency and curriculum availability for that new teacher, but also allow them to implement some of these great ideas they have, which I was, in my, in my current job, which is my really only job, and hope that it's my last job and only job, I was allowed flexibility right when I came in to do some things that I wanted to do, and that really tied me to my organization like, you know, forever. Like, they let me come in, I had some ideas, we implemented them, they've been awesome, it's been great, and I just feel really committed because they did that for me. And I, and I really think that's what we need to do and provide that. We provide the support and allow them to be innovative and creative.
As long as we have the old-time teachers, or the older teachers that are creating.
The clock stopped. I'm like, what's happening?
So can, is that?
It's weird.
We didn't add that under management and.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We didn't add that under management and operational leadership about, I don't know if that's important, but that, but that mentoring, support.
It's there on the. It's there on the gray card. It says, "Selection, placement, mentoring, professional development and retention."
Oh, perfect. Okay.
So I think, not to be too technical, but that actually goes over here under visionary strategic.
You, me and Amy, we have this, we have this philosophical debate all the time. I'll put it wherever you would like.
Let's change the wording on that that says.
Are we talking about this or this?
Operations, yeah.
You know, Steve, I think what we discussed though in this thing, because both, we all three thought things should go.
I'll put it over here. Is this where you want it? I'm going to do the work. I don't, there we go.
But what we had discussed before, and I think this is really important, and what you had asked before was, you know, I thought something went here, Steve thought it went here and you thought it went somewhere else. And so we all didn't agree with this, but this is your instructional, this is your instructional. Wherever you put it is fine as long as that work is the work that's getting done. So it's your strategic plan, it's your plan.
The conversation that we had was really around that big card. There's parts of it that are an operational function, there's parts of it that are an organizational function. There's parts of it that are instructional leadership. So it really could live.
So.
I just was trying to have one thing under every heading, Steve, but.
So put bond up there. In big letters. I'm just saying, you make your gray card that says.
It says, "Bond, Community Builders."
I know, I'm just saying, if you want one thing under every heading, then I'll put something under there for you. Says bond.
I, yes, I'm writing bond right now.
I'm just saying on your gray card, if you want something under.
For me, the bond fits in the long-term facilities planning, but.
Which is, right.
Which goes under.
Here you go. Bond.
Perfect. So that says management and operational leadership. Really what that column is, it's, it is all the physical stuff that goes along with running the organization. It's, it's buildings, it's maintenance, it's technology, it's whatever it is that is operational. And money.
But I don't think the bond is the responsibility of the superintendent.
I, and that's the thing too, now under visionary and strategic organizational leadership. I think for our school district to be successful, we all need to have a really common, very known, well-known goal that we are all working toward, set of goals, whatever. And so to me, that's a key thing. Another really key thing is engaging highly effective people at every single level. And so I don't like having all of those. I agree, bond is key. It is, it is key, but, but I don't think that's, I think that's something that Michelle is going to give to somebody else and let them run with it. She's going to oversee it. She sees, oversees everything, but something that she's going to have her hand in every step of the way. I don't know if bond would be the best one.
And really the bond is the board's responsibility. That's one of our primary duties is to, to put forth a bond, develop a bond, discuss a bond, you know. But I, I mean, obviously there's so much, there's many parts that the district plays, but, but really that's something that we looked into. They looked, they provided the data that we asked, we talked about it, we discussed it. We decided, we voted on that. That was really, that's really our deal. I didn't want to comment on the.
I think, before you leave that topic, I think it's messaging the bond is what we're talking about over there. And that's not the board's responsibility.
I know, and I wonder if that would be other collaborative communication. Information sharing around the facilities and I put bond in the, do you want a big card that says goodbye?
No. I want my, that gray card moved back over there so that we can keep both those.
I'll wear it like a sandwich board.
So, but I mean, the bond is huge.
The bond is huge, but it's not something that she should be actually rated on as her, as her.
I agree. Messaging the bond is what the district helps us with, but deciding what goes on the bond and the size of the bond, that's the most important thing. And that's.
I unilaterally added a card too about the levy because that'll be something we need to talk about last year just for.
I'll just say in the.
Yeah, question mark.
The collaborative culture communications, I think we don't have much on there because I think that's something that we're doing very well already. I think there's been a lot of great changes in last year that we just need to keep going. You know, all the YouTube stuff, all the interaction, the community interaction I think is fantastic. The one thing that I think we could do there that would be super easy to just check off would be to start live streaming our board meetings. I'm just saying that could be something really easy. You just add that, make that work, check it off.
Another thing that can be, you know, somebody else can do that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We just say, yep, let's vote on this or do whatever we have to do to make it happen and.
One of the, what I'd say, maybe it's just personal, I know we've all talked about it, or several of us have talked about it before. But I think an initiative that would really help, that would fit under collaborative culture, so where it says, "Establish a respectful, positive district culture centered around solution-focused communication and authentic engagement." We, we've talked about ALMS BUDSMAN. And we've had parents that have called us before or sent us emails that have said, "I had this issue." Whether it's child behavior, whether it's how my child was treated here. And they come back to us and they say, "I was mist, my family was mistreated and the problem wasn't solved six months ago and it just continues to fester and become a bigger deal." And then pretty soon, everything that the district does is wrong in the eyes of some families. So I'd like to see, and I think it would take a lot off Ms. Whitney's plate and allow her to do other stuff, but to have that district, ALMS BUDSMAN, stand that up when a family calls and has an issue. ALMS BUDSMAN takes it over, figures out, you know, who to help answer. If that solution doesn't work, shows other avenues that that parent can go down. And it's, it's not coming straight from the board, it's not coming straight from Ms. Whitney. It's, it's this other person here and I think it would take a lot off your plate and allow you to focus on some of these other things. So I'd, I'd put that on my top five, you know, initiatives that I'd like to see stood up this next year.
I'm not sure if I spelled ALMS BUDSMAN correctly, but I put it up there. So don't grade my spelling.
You have to have the right person in that role because that's.
I did some significant research around it when the request first, when we very first started talking about it. And it's, it's a, it's a whole kind of nuanced job field that I had no idea about. It's really quite fascinating. It really is a fascinating, I mean, it's a career. It's a, it's a whole, it's not just someone who, you know, answers a phone. I mean, there's a data collection component. I mean, it's just really a fascinating, I had a, probably like an hour and a half conversation with the ALMS BUDSMAN from Seattle Public Schools and it's just fascinating. Anyway.
And they have to have a little bit of authority to be able to get answers.
Well, in, in most organizations that have them, they report directly to the superintendent. So it's a, but it's just, I was, I was surprised. I just didn't know a lot about it as a, as even an entity, like what they did, what that. I mean, it's a, really a fascinating field.
And what did this person do before that?
They had, they were always an ALMS BUDSMAN. She also had some counseling background, which I think is helpful. But anyways, it's fascinating work.
And then this one isn't, it's not a new initiative. It might just be rolled up under, it's not really instructional leadership, but it goes with your equity and program access and you mentioned it with the athletic review that we're doing, are going to have done. You know, we've heard stuff, it's not curriculum, but from athletic people. We have, we have some different situations in our district where we have middle schools, right? Where we have two grades, so those grades are a lot bigger than in other districts. And there's been talk about, well, we don't have equity and sports program access there. So Ms. Whitney's going to have a, what do you call it, an audit or review done, not just on that, but as athletics across the district, she said.
Yeah, and I believe I meet with that gentleman tomorrow, actually. Tomorrow afternoon.
So again, not a new initiative, but it might roll up under.
And it also aligns with our outrageous outcome around extracurricular. Hundred percent of our kids will be engaged in extracurricular activities. So, yeah, I meet with the gentleman tomorrow at four o'clock, I believe.
Just another initiative that's already under, already being undertaken that maybe we could just have a quick, that will probably finish by the next square. I don't know, the high cap thing, we haven't talked about that at all. I know that there's been a lot of work around that. And is that something that would be wrapped up kind of this year and not really a new, something for next year?
You know, it will be-ish. I think there'll be some things that are, but you're right. I think that that needs to go under the instructional leadership.
That seems very equal to ensuring equity and program access.
Exactly. It totally fits there.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it almost seems like it's already encompassed.
Some recommendations to implement in the fall, but it's like, it will phase in. So I think you're right.
Yeah, because there's kind of two issues there, right? There's like spectrum, that type of high cap or high cap class. And then there's this idea that, that we're all having to implement where every child and every class and every grade level is supposed to have instructional material that is more in line.
Well, and this, this, I'm glad that you brought that up. The, we took on high cap K eight this fall or spring-ish, or I guess winter and into the spring. So really we would need to, we're going to start looking at nine twelve. So it absolutely is an ongoing initiative. I'm glad that you mentioned it.
I have one that, it's not a new initiative, but it kind of rolls up under visionary strategic, under the last thing there, in your organization. But as part of that organizational development, ensure the messaging is there for everybody in the community so that people can see what the people in our, in our booth building, in our administrators are in charge of and what they're doing so that when there are questions, they know who to go contact. Because sometimes people look at, as has been discussed before, look at the org chart and say, "I'm not, I'm not really sure" the difference between what these two or three people do. And I'm, I have confidence that there is difference in what they're doing, but we want to be able to make that a transparent organization.
Yeah, Joelle's doing a nice job on some refresh of the website that should be done by the end of June.
So community transparency and roles and responsibility in the district administration. Does anybody have an initiative that we haven't discussed up here that you've been thinking about that isn't really been under any of these that you'd like to recommend for top three to five initiatives for Ms. Whitney's focus?
So I know we're currently looking at the high school. I don't know what the term is, but the classes and the schedule possibly.
High School Reimagine?
Well, yeah, that used to be what we called.
Excuse me, College and Career Readiness Initiative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are we tracking that somewhere?
Yes.
Because that, and I think that one's going to be, I mean, that is going to impact our students in a big way. So not that it's new, but, but it's probably one that's on your plate or should be.
You know, we didn't have a lot of time to come up with goals around these areas in our specific goals that we set with the superintendent. Do we want to make, take those goals out and put these goals in or do you want to stay with that?
So the goals that are there are around ensuring awareness of the five outrageous outcomes among all PSD stakeholders and put in place a system of monitoring the district's progress toward achieving those goals, including regular reports, interim benchmarks and a data dashboard.
Which is already one of those.
And then develop a comprehensive long-term facilities management plan to help the district strategically plan for future facility needs and establish an ongoing cycle for keeping facilities up to date. So I think we've talked about that. And then the last one is design and implement a senior continuum of early learning opportunities focused on increasing kinder readiness district-wide. So those are what, what's there.
I think one of the other things that I don't, that we haven't talked about really has to do with just special education. Kind of the, we have the high cap, but there's some special education things that I think we need to work on and I think that's sometimes a struggle.
We're kind of encompassing our focus on special education under the Seamless Intervention Initiative. And actually Eric has been in contact with a couple of outside facilitators that are going to help come. We're really excited about that initiative and anyway, it's going to be awesome. And it's absolutely encompasses special education.
So how are these going to be narrowed down?
All of these?
I was just going to ask, if anyone, I was going to say if I asked Ms. Whitney, she probably has some colored stickers there to give us. But does anybody on the board have a preference or a recommendation for, for how we go about narrowing these down to three to five?
My preference is no dots.
No dots?
Dr. Richardson doesn't like the dots.
Alternative recommendation?
She can synthesize it and then send us back an update of what you started with.
That's the thing though, we can't, we can't focus on all of these. And I think we need to decide as a board, you know, we, this needs to be three to five areas. And I think that we've introduced more. I mean, I think the bond adds a sixth area in and of itself. I mean, I think you can roll up athletics, high cap STEM, allowing ensuring equity, but then if you're really going to focus on each one of those programs this year, it's too much, you know? We, the whole purpose was to narrow the focus so that we can be more effective in every area rather than being so thinly spread.
So I think this is the challenge. I mean, this is where I would like to see a workshop like this or a study session or whatever we're calling this, a retreat that takes longer time so we can, I mean, we've put out a lot of ideas here. But now we're going to leave and I don't know how you guys are, but.
Well, this doesn't have to be the last. I mean, this could be the first, right?
But it takes, but the next time we meet, it's going to take a half hour to come up to speed on, oh yeah, that's what, oh yeah. Whereas if we can, if we can set aside a time, it's like, I mean, not a whole day necessarily, but more than an hour, two or three or four hours, where we can then say, okay, maybe we can group some of these. I mean, we can certainly send you off to find some consistency there, but what you're thinking and what we're thinking might be a little different. We've seen that before, not with you, but with, in previous retreats that we've done like this. So it would be great if we had more time and we could kind of determine what really is our priority. Maybe we combine some like Amy was saying.
What about a two-hour session if we go like four to six and have a working dinner prior to, prior to a board meeting? Would that work for everybody?
That's fine. And I think another, in addition to combining them, I mean, these aren't all things that Ms. Whitney has to do. I mean, I think we've, we've really, this has been really beneficial in pointing out just some really high-level things that we're hearing from teachers and schools and these are kind of some areas of focus. That's identifying three to five initiatives for the superintendent annual work plan. So there are some of these that, that I think Ms. Whitney doesn't have to get down knee-deep into, but that we really need to address. And I hate to just like cut them off. They need to be addressed and, but it may be something that Ms. Whitney doesn't focus on, but that someone needs to focus on.
Well, and I think someone who is kind of ankle-deep into the outrageous outcomes and those initiatives, like I see some very natural connections and what you've brought up here too, yes. And we can tackle that through an initiative that's already identified in the outrageous outcome work. So that's something I can bring to the table because I know those initiatives. So it's in some ways, some of what you said are the kind of quote-unquote, to use your board governance language, some operational expectations in the way that we tackle some of the initiatives we're already doing.
You know, if we do come back and do this and try to narrow down the focus, what I would, I would personally like from you, and you guys can tell me what you think of this, is having something, another thing on the bottom that says, this work, you can either put a person, like, you know, Eric Bolts is over this work, it's going to happen, it's kind of happening under him. And, and do that under each one that you think some of these, like maybe high cap and sped is going under somebody. Anyway, and, and then same, but I feel like I'm really the, the person that needs to do this work. So at least get your opinion. And we might say, you know, Steve might say, no, that bond needs to be Ms. Whitney because it is the top priority. And we can have that discussion and, and we can move those around, but at least we get your ideas of this is going to happen. It's going to happen here. Are you okay with it happening here or do I have to make it a priority? But that would make, that would simplify this just by knowing it's getting to happen somewhere else in the district.
Yeah, I agree. That's exactly what I'd like to see because I think Ms. Whitney has a pretty, has probably the best grasp of all of the plans already in place and she can kind of fit these in, come back to us with like, yep, Mr. Bolts is, is taking the lead on this, this, we're going to combine these. This is where it fits in here, what I think are the three to five or six things. And then we can provide feedback again before we just take another hour to kind of talk about it. I think that's the next step.
Sure.
There's very few brand-new ideas here, very few. I mean, the ALMS BUDSMAN might be the, you know, I know it's not a brand-new one, but it might be something that's not under the works. Most of these are already at least started or going on.
That's something that I would like to move forward. That's something that I would like to move forward with really soon, something hiring somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah, but some of these like that, the live stream, we could just do, right? You would just have sign someone, and if we all vote on it or whatever, I mean, it can happen.
But it's one more FTE. It's one more FTE. We need to make sure that's the best use of our time and our time and money.
That's the, right. The concept is not a challenge. You know, I think conceptually, we all want to deliver high-quality customer service and a singular point of contact. It's, you know, in the priority of where we need additional FTE on a list, where does this fall in? And so I think there's just a broader kind of thinking around it that we would need to have.
Okay, so, well, we, and we may be able to use a company like this, Ms. McPherson-Daniels to come in, and that was part of their thing to help, you know, they may give us a fresh perspective on how some of these fit in as three to five initiatives and some of them don't. So we'll talk as Ms. Phillips and I and, and Ms. Whitney will talk about how to move going forward. Sounds like a two to four-hour session, hopefully prior to a board meeting, but if that doesn't work for everybody, we'll, we'll do one or two sessions prior to some board meetings to narrow this down.
That's great.
Well, even if we schedule these on our calendar, I mean, I think we've talked about this, a retreat, personally, I would like to do this like a four-hour session once or twice a year. We just put that on our calendar, that this is the day.
And, and I believe in the calendar that we started with, we need to bring that back for finalization. We did already identify a couple of those, and I can take a look and guarantee that they are. Like, I know for a fact we have one in November. I believe we did one in January, and then is there one in July? Anyways, I can look and make sure, because I like the idea of getting them on the calendar early. We also started this process early. I mean, it's April. I mean, so we have some time to finalize it. I wanted to make sure that you had ample time to participate in the process, so we're not up against a timeline. I mean, really, if we have this finalized by July, be great.
All right, thank you. Thank you for joining us. We'll reconvene at 6:30 for a regular scheduled report.